Welcome, everyone. It's Wednesday, June 21st, 2023. It's 7:09 PM. This is the June regular meeting of the Kensington Fire Protection District Board of Directors. I will convene the meeting by calling roll. Director Levine?
Here.
Director Nagel?
Here.
Director Watt?
Here.
And Director Domer, who's on Zoom? I think you might be muted, Don. See you but can't hear you. You're muted, Don. Could you unmute yourself?
He's in the meeting. He just needs to unmute himself on his end.
Well, I think we see that he's here. I think we could probably keep going. And I'm Julie Stein. I'm here. We apologize for starting late. And are we? Does the board have to generally approve? So Director Domer is ill today and is exercising his option to participate remotely. Do we need an actual motion or? Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve Director Domer participating by Zoom because of his illness?
I move we allow Director Domer to attend remotely because of his illness.
Second.
Okay, any board discussion? Or public comment? Okay, then I will take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, opposed, abstain? Okay, great. Glad to have you join us remotely, Don. So the first item on our agenda, ah, first item on our agenda is public comment on items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. We have one member of the public in the room and it looks like six attendees online. So would anyone like to make a public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing no hands raised, we'll move to board member comments. Oh, okay. Diana Cramp, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, one of our neighbors wrote in about this concern. I live on the lower end of Sunset Drive. And we see the signs indicating that Sunset is an evacuation route in the event of an emergency, which totally makes sense, at least from my point of view. I'm not speaking for others. But what we're concerned about is the amount of parking that goes on Sunset Drive. And if we have a horde of cars coming down Sunset trying to evacuate through the cemetery, it's going to be catastrophic. What we would like to see, or at least discuss, is that the parking be limited to only one side of the street and that the parked cars be facing down the hill. And I think my neighbor, Tom Letterer, also sent a comment in that regard.
Thank you for your comment. And if any board member wants to follow up on your comment, they can do so during board member comments, which come next. And if you could lower your hand and mute yourself again, we will move on to board member comments. Anyone? Okay, anything from you, Don? Okay, great. So we will close the public comment period and move on to the first item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. And the public hearing addresses fire hazard, fired hazard abatement on the designation of properties containing fire hazards. So before the hearing, the president will ask those in the audience having objections to the designation of their property as containing fire hazards to identify their property addresses. So I think the first thing we should do is see if there's anyone in the room who has an objection. And seeing none, if you're on the Zoom call and you have an objection, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we can now proceed with the hearing and open the public hearing. So the first step of the public hearing is to call for the staff report and recommendations from staff. So El Cerrito Fire Department Captain Chrome Packer will provide the staff report for this item.
Good evening, everybody. For those who don't know me, Captain Chrome Packer been in fire prevention for, since about January. Been on the department for about 18 years now. And I've been driving around looking at everybody's weeds lately. So we've, I've driven all of Kensington, which was around, I think we sent out about 50 letters. And I had, I believe, Exhibit A. Is that up there anywhere? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. All right, well, Exhibit A has about 11 properties on it. I just recently drove it. And as of 5 o'clock tonight, I was able to knock off five more. So basically, there are one, two, three, four, five more that I'm asking the council to go ahead and proceed with forced abatement on. And that's where we're at as far as beat abatement goes. And then we'll be following up with another report if this goes through for the forced abatement.
So do you need to tell us specifically which five properties, since the list is smaller?
I can tell them to you if you guys would like. Do you guys have the exhibit? I thought there was a
I have something in the packet that shows
Right, that you have.
It's in the, yeah.
Shows like 11 altogether.
Yeah, so the vacant lots on Beloit, there you go, thank you. Yeah, so as you can see, the top, let's see, five, all the ones on Beloit are the ones that will be proceeding with the forced abatement. As of 5 o'clock tonight, I've driven again. I've cleared the other ones. They've actually cut their weeds. So that's the most current list. So I'll be taking those off. And so one through five on Beloit is what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you. The next step in the public hearing is to call for comments from those in the audience regarding fire abatement. Let's start with the room. Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think this is a real tribute to the citizens of Kensington. We've got something like 1,500 properties in the little villa of Kensington. And we have exactly five properties that we have to take action on. I think that's a tribute to Kensington and to our fire department. Thank you very much.
Okay, so just following the procedure here. Now is the time to call for comments from those on the Zoom call who may have comments regarding fire hazard abatement. I do see a hand raised. Candy Capigrossi, could you please go ahead? You're unmuted.
Yes, thank you very much. I had a question. My neighbor has had a very old car parked on his lawn. I worked with the county years ago. They removed the car and then he towed it back. My concern is that obviously it has oil and gas and things that may not be, weed whacked his yard. But I still think that this is a potential fire starter. And I wanted to know if the fire the fire person speaking had a comment about cars, old cars being left on property. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your concern. We would like to address that most with, or first with the police department, and then if they can't help resolve the issue. But typically, that's not something we deal with as far as just a fire hazard with an old car in a driveway that usually doesn't fall into our court. So have you tried working with police department yet?
No, when the car was removed, by the way, it's not on a driveway. It's sitting on grass. It's not, there's no driveway. But yes, when they did remove the car, he called the police. So it may need to go back to the county. Thank you.
Okay, what's the address? And I can look into this.
I am, I, oh, I am at 69 Kingston. I think he's 71, but I'm not absolutely sure.
Okay. I can also talk to Kensington Police Department about this as well.
Thank you very much.
Hey, any other comments from the Zoom call? So we are now able to close the public hearing. I echo Larry's comments. Thank you very much, Captain Chrome Packer. Excellent work.
Thank you.
And the board can now move on to deliberating, discussing, deliberating, adopting Resolution 2304, declaring that weeds, rubbish, litter, or other flammable material on designated private properties constitutes a public nuisance and providing for notice that the fire chief or designee shall abate such public nuisance conditions, if not abated by the property owner. Go ahead, Larry.
I would like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution 2304.
So I just have a comment maybe before your motion is seconded. I looked through the resolution and I noticed that the date of the next hearing is scheduled for August 16th, 2023, which is our regular August meeting. I had planned to bring up later with the board the prospect of getting back to our old routine of canceling the August meeting if we don't have enough, you know, if our business schedule allows. I checked with Mary. We could hold this public heating, hearing at the September meeting if folks are amenable to changing the date to September 20th. Do you see what it's on?
I have no issue with it.
Page nine of your packet. Yeah, I'm talking about the resolution and page nine, it's the final paragraph. Be it further resolved that the notice shall state that a public hearing shall be held on August 16th. And I'd like to propose for the board's consideration that we change that date to September 20th. In the event, we might cancel the August meeting if our workload permits. This would give us flexibility that we wouldn't have to meet just because we'd pass this resolution with this date.
I personally have no problem with that.
Is it better to have the meeting in July or in September? I'm fine with that.
So would you, would you mind amending your motion to include the change of the date?
I will take that as a friendly amendment that the the public, the next public hearing shall be held on the September meeting at 7:00 PM.
September 20th, okay. Do I have a second to Larry's motion?
Second.
Any board discussion?
I do actually have a few minor things. On page 11 of the packet, the opening, it's the letter that says with the continued drought conditions is the first paragraph, it is, correct me if I'm wrong, we are no longer in drought conditions, does not lessen the need to abate that, but we could fix that. And on page, oh goodness, page 18 of the packet, which is a big, long list of information, which is, I believe, sent to the homes. There's a link in section D, planting considerations, Diablo Firesafe Council at Diablo Firesafe Council.org/tolerance.html. That link is dead. The correct link appears to be DiabloFireSafety.org/guide-two-plants. So that appears twice in the letter. So if you could update that, that would be great. Thank you. Because I was very interested to read about the plants and that I couldn't. That's all.
Any other board member comment or discussion? Public comment on the resolution? Seeing no hands raised on the Zoom call or in the room, I will just call. All in favor of the resolution? Aye? How about you, Don? Raise this hand. Aye. I need to move my window here so I can. All opposed? Abstain. So that's five in favor of the resolution. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is the adoption of consent items on the consent calendar. The items below are listed as consent items, which may be considered routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. If any board member would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for further discussion, please let us know. And of course, we, that's our procedure. We will do that. And yeah, Mary.
And I just wanted, I just wanted to make an update that the only minutes included are the May 17th. The rest will be continued to the next agenda. So the May 17th minutes are the only included for
Got it. So the consent items are, A, approval of the minutes of the May 17, 2023 meeting, acceptance of the incident activity report for May 2023, approval of the monthly transmittal for June 21st, 2023, approval of monthly financial reports dated May 31st, 2023, recruitment report from Brent Ives on the general manager recruitment project, project to receive and file the report, adoption of Resolution 23, 2023-05, establishing the appropriations limit of the Kensington Fire Protection District for fiscal year 2023-2024. The action would be adopt. Adoption of Resolution 2023-06, authorizing Contra Costa County to place the special tax on the tax roll for fiscal year 2023-24 and to collect the special tax on behalf of the Kensington Fire Protection District. H is fiscal year 2023-24 fee schedule for the El Cerrito Kensington Fire Department contract. Item I is fiscal year 2021-22. OPEB, which stands for Other Post Employment Benefits Actuarial Report. And item J is fiscal year 2021-22 Annual Audit. Would any member of the board like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion?
I just had a question on one of them. The OPEB report, why does it address to Brenda?
Okay, so I think then we have to remove it, Daniel.
Oh, okay. Then
I think, I don't know. Can you just answer that? I wondered that myself, but
I, they have her name. I guess it's that way. So I need to be making updates. But yeah,
I was just curious.
Last minute. We can make that update. That's not
I don't care about changing it. I was just curious.
Okay, fine. Larry, yeah.
I had one question that had to do with the audit. Usually, we have the auditor come and give the board a report on the audit. Are we going to do that at a later time? Or are we just foregoing that this year for some reason?
I'll let Mary answer and Finance Committee can chime in too.
Yeah, so the auditor came and presented to the Finance Committee and with their constrictive staffing, I didn't have them come to this meeting knowing especially that we had so many items, but I can certainly have them come and present. They did a thorough presentation at the Finance Committee meeting on June 6th.
Yes, I was there. But I mean, but it would be nice to have the public here, here this
So we can leave it on the consent calendar, though. Did you want to pull it off the consent calendar and talk about whether we'll accept the item audit tonight or not? Because I think Mary can speak to the audit quite eloquently if you'd like to pull it, maybe pull it. How about this? I will pull the audit myself and we can discuss it after we take care of the consent calendar.
I don't see any reason to pull it. I just like the idea of having a report, especially since it was a clean audit. And we passed with flying colors and that's very, very good news. I hate to see that get buried in a consent calendar.
Well, why don't we just have a brief overview of it after consent calendar? And then we can vote on it separately.
I move to adopt the consent calendar with the amendment of the minutes as described by Mary and removing item J for discussion later.
Do I have a second? Second by Jim. Since it's consent, there's no discussion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Don?
Don? Oh, Don's lost his video.
Oh.
Don's camera is
Oh, let's give just, we do have enough to pass the motion, but Don, are you able to turn your camera back on and just? Hard to tell. Well, I think we can consider the consent calendar passed, four to zero for now. We could potentially record Don as abstaining. I think, I don't know what else to do. He's not voting against or for it. And hopefully he'll get his video back. So let's just cover the audit right now.
Sure.
And turn it over to Mary.
Thank you. Yes, the annual audit fiscal year 2021-22, we would normally be bringing this to you in probably December, January timeframe. But the auditors had let us know at the beginning of the audit, prior to my arrival, they let the prior GM know that they were having some staffing challenges with getting audit staff to perform audits. And I've had that experience in other agencies. They're just having a really difficult time getting auditors. And then we had our transition here with the internal staff. So it took a little bit longer, but we did get it completed, very clean audit. All of the records are in good financial order. They had some carryover recommendations from the prior year, which are just some cleanup items in the system. So the QuickBooks software has items in there that they basically clear one another out. So they balance out, but they just need to be cleared out of the system, purged out of the system because they're just transactions that are hanging out there. So it's on the finance staff list to clean those out. So it doesn't affect the records. It just has these transactions, transactions hanging out there. So we're going to get those cleaned up. But other than that, the auditor presented at the Finance Committee and said that the district's in very good shape. And they did let me know for the next audit year, they may be having challenges getting the audit scheduled in. This was the last year of their audit contract. So we're going to be talking about that in the next week or two with the auditors and see. They did say that they would also potentially have increased fees. So we'll probably take a look and see what other options there are, but we just know that that audit market is really difficult right now.
Thanks, Mary.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Could we go to page 10 of that audit?
Okay.
Under unbalanced?
Yes. There it is. Okay, yes.
You're with me.
It's
97 of the packet.
And the third group down is fund balance.
It's okay.
Extremely important number for us because that's the amount of money that we have available to us as of June 30th, the date of this, this audit, which was 2022. And I would like to see this expanded when we go forward, where it says, for example, committed. The grand total over on the far right is 3,926,000. And presumably that is the, is the amount of money that we were obligated to pay El Cerrito or fire services.
That's actually under assigned.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Excuse me, it's under assigned. So the, maybe
No, I'm looking under committed. Did I say assigned? I meant committed.
Well, committed, so the 3.3 million of the 3.9 million is the capital project fund. So that's for the public safety building. The El Cerrito contract is under the assigned category, the 3 million.
But it shows as 3 million almost even. And yet we have typically, our contract for the year is closer to 4 million. So I'm wondering why it's 3 million then.
Yeah, so you're right. So it's, it's, it's the combination of the two, the committed 409,000 was most likely a payment in progress. So it's counted differently because it's already committed. And then the assigned is the remaining balance of that.
Okay. And maybe going forward, if we could put a little more clarification on that, just to let us
Yeah, and so the auditors, for their statement purposes, they can't really add more detail. But what we had talked about and will do in the next audit is in our management discussion and analysis, that's the report at the beginning that we write on various things that don't get covered in the specific financial statements. We'll break those out so that it's easier to understand and it kind of will describe those further.
We also talked about the fact that while we have committed obligations for El Cerrito, we also have taken on obligations to set aside money for our fire trucks. But we don't have any, we don't have those in a specific category.
They're within the capital project fund, the committed one we just talked about too. Yeah, they're within that.
But I guess the question is, should they be in their own category? I don't know.
Well, not for audit purposes, but we can spell them out in our own table. Yes.
Okay.
I was also going to make a comment about the fund balance, but I was going to refer to note four, which is on page 113 of the PDF file, page 26 of the audit report. So it's, it's too bad that the audio of the people in the room wasn't so strong during the Finance Committee meeting because Jim brought up the issue of this fund balance and the auditor directed us to note four. And it was a very informative discussion. And I just wanted to summarize, at least based on the notes that I took and the conversation that we had with the auditor, because I think that this can be very important for us when we get to the reserve, the item of potentially looking at a new reserve policy and other things that might be happening to the fire district. So the auditor explained, there are four categories here, non-spendable, committed, assigned, and unassigned types of fund balances. And they're really in the order of decrease, decrease level of commitment or increase level of flexibility, depending on how you want to look at it. So the non-spendable is sort of ironclad. That's not spendable. It's committed. Down to unassigned, which can essentially be used for any purpose within the mission of the district that's legal and so forth. And in between there, the board basically has some discretion with its own policies and its discussions. And we can get further guidance on this. And we can get further guidance on this to really move things, for example, from the unassigned category up to the assigned category and potentially up to the committed category, if I understood it correctly, um, with the capital improvement plan. So for me mentally, this kind of sets the stage for our discussion later in the meeting about whether we'd like to look at, um, a somewhat educated reserve policy for the fire district with the goal of potentially protecting more of the contract obligation to El Cerrito, given that we have an eighteen-month termination clause in that contract. So we can talk about that later, but I think that this note number four is illustrative. And as Mary said, management can break this out in more detail so that it's easier for the, the board to actually sort of figure out what these, um, what these amounts represent. So, any other board comment discussion? We, let's see if there's a motion to, what is it? Is it, except, do I have a motion to accept the?
Uh, I move to accept the fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two annual audit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got from Jim. And is there any public comment on the audit? Appears to be none in the room. We have some members of the public. Need to move my window over.
No hands now.
I don't see any hands raised. So I will call the vote to, um, adopt, adopt the motion made to adopt the audit. All in favor? Aye?
We've also fully lost Don.
Fully lost Don. He wasn't sure if he was going to make it through the entire meeting, so. So we'll call that four in favor and one absent at this point. Okay. Thanks, Larry. I think that that was just fine to discuss it. Would you still like to actually have the auditor make a presentation? Maybe they could do that by Zoom? Or did you feel that that was a, would you still like to have the auditor present to the board at a later date? Uh, the auditor's perspective? Okay, I, I found his presentation to be very informative, the elements that the auditor considers. So, sure. Sounds good.
Well, he's already showed up once, so.
I, I think it was.
Already showed up once to the Finance Committee meeting.
Well, yeah, how many people watched Finance Committee?
Just us.
You guys. Oh, I thought he was audible on the Zoom call because he participated by Zoom. So, yeah, okay. All right, so moving along, um, we are ready for, um, agenda item five, Fire Chief's Report. Or Chief Sailors.
Good evening, directors. It's good to see you all again. I'm going to hit the highlights because we had a fairly good month. Uh, we did meet with the Finance Committee with the City Manager and myself. Um, we also completed the realignment of all the labeling of the numbers of the new fire engines and stations. If you see them rolling around, you knew that was coming. All labeling has been done. Uh, our major fire this month was a large encampment fire along the parkway and, uh, crews suppressed it. And El Cerrito is actually in that region having better response with homeless and numbers have gone down, but those, those encampment fires are quite dangerous. Uh, we did participate in the Golden Eagle Drill, which is a large EOC drill that happened in Martinez at the County EOC. The scenario was a large wildland fire that came up over the ridge line in Richmond. There was a few hundred people there all participating and practicing, coordinating all the efforts across the county from the operations of the fire service to actually suppressing and containing the fire to public health, finding places for evacuees, to the PIOs all coming together, putting together a message and handing the message out to the media. Good drill, very successful, and that'll lead me into the deliverable you asked for. Uh, last meeting, Director President Stein. So you will get an electronic copy of this so that the links will actually work. But I drafted in one page some general guidance for your requirements as elected officials. And to become an elected official of a fire board, the weight of responsibility is very heavy. A lot of this language is directly from FEMA, but you are responsible for the public safety of the residents within the jurisdiction now. You provide strategic guidance during and after emergencies, and you may provide direction to constituents during incidents. So in order to do that effectively, you have to have a clear understanding of the National Incident Management System. This is the process that came out after nine eleven to try and bring us all together and use a formal lexicon that allows us to coordinate with other entities. So your minimum ICS standards are IS one hundred and IS seven hundred. There's links there for you. They're free online classes. They'll give you the basic introduction of the terminology of the incident command system so that if I start babbling off acronyms, you at least understand what I'm saying. And also a basic introduction to the national management, incident management system. So that if we are involved in a large incident that is regional, regional, countrywide, you'll understand how that response model works. Now, in addition to that, there are some other courses that are recommended, including ICS two hundred, ICS eight hundred. And there's been a new guidebook published in twenty twenty-two that includes a new class called G four zero two, which is directed specifically towards elected officials and senior officials. I have a note there, they haven't completed the course yet, but it's coming in late twenty twenty-three. So the idea of that course was to give guidance directly for local officials like yourself. I also have a link to that newly published guidebook out of twenty twenty-two, Your Local Elected Appointed Officials Guide, Your Roles and Responsibilities. So the question that you asked Director Stein in the last meeting was, what is expected of you during an emergency? And it was a fantastic question. So when we think about general emergencies, ones that we will interact in at this board level would be a local emergency contained simply just to Kensington. That is where you'll largely participate in. So that is not the movement of the Hayward Fault. That is not the movement of a large wildfire. Those will be regional emergencies where an incident management team will come in and they will take over the incident and they will manage a lot of it for you. But if we have a local incident, and two examples I have here is if we have a weather event that is isolated just to us, kind of like what happened in Richmond, where you have a few homes slide, or you have potentially a mass killing, something in a church or a school, I'm sorry, but these are, these are events that happen, right? That will be contained to us. We want to be ready for them. Or, you know, like landslide, anything that's locally to us. The first thing you want to do is check in with your manager and the fire chief, right? Because we can give you situational awareness of what happens and where we're going from here. Now, I have in here, we're either going to report to Station fifty-five and report to the City Hall at El Cerrito, depending on the timeframe and the location. If Station sixty, fifty-five is complete and it is not involved in the event, then that's the best place for us to report to. If not, then we can use the El Cerrito City Hall. And we can start setting up a local EOC there and we can guide you through the process of declaring a disaster and what your incident management team is doing locally. Now, with that, if we move to regional emergencies, would be a large wildfire or the movement of the fault line. At that point, it is going to be beyond you very quickly, and that's when an incident management team will come into play. You'll still have some role in coordinating the declaration of the disaster. But for your sake, primary, get direction from us. We'll probably bring you to the City Hall, but you want to make sure that you're safe and you're able to get out of the region as well. So when we divide those two emergencies up, it helps you kind of wrap your head around where you're going to participate. And that framework will allow you to pay attention to, when you take these classes, exactly how you would participate. So I will send an electronic copy of this for you so all the links work. And when that, uh, when that course, G four zero two is done, if I see it before you, I'll give you an update. End of report. Questions?
By checking with Fire Chief. How do we do that?
Now, that is a great question. You, your best bet is to call me right now. Typically, how this works is that you would go through your manager, but since.
Okay.
Yes, so that's why I say check in with manager or me. But since our manager is part-time, she might not be available. So I'm your best bet, but I should be coordinating with her the second we have an event and her and I should be talking, right? So you can check in with either of us to make sure they get direction. Yeah, and then I'll give you an update on where we're at, where we're headed and give you the best advice I have as far as, all right, we're heading to Station fifty-five or we're heading to the Town Hall where you can check in with the incident commander. I hope that clarifies.
It did. And what is an ECT?
Oh, etc. Sorry. Oh, all right. My fault. That is my fault. Yes. Yes, okay. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. I, I think it's been quite a while since, uh, we took IS one hundred and IS seven hundred. So it sounds like, uh, probably the first thing we should think about doing is getting everybody enrolled in that class.
Yeah, they're, they, they don't have an expiration date on them, but if it's been a long time as well for me, believe me, it's been a long time since I've taken my initial ICS classes as well. It'd be good to review, especially if you're not practicing them.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking, I think, twenty oh six, maybe twenty, or no, not.
Yeah, for your, for your IC one hundred was when you took it? Yeah. Okay. Okay. And when you read your responsibilities, I mean, that, that is straight from FEMA. Uh, you don't want to get yourself caught in a position where you are responsible. The, the original draft of two thousand and six direction, its doctrine said that you will not be available for emergency funds if your elected officials don't meet these minimum requirements. Now, now, I've never seen that tested and I don't know, and stick that was put into play to make sure that elected officials were ready. And a lot of that came from Hurricane Katrina, right? The, the lessons from Hurricane Katrina brought us up to speed on, we have to bring our elected officials up.
I have one last.
We did have that conversation at the last Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting uh, because we're looking at possibly applying to FEMA for grants. And it, uh, it was raised that, uh, FEMA isn't going to be interested in giving us a grant if we don't have a current hazard mitigation plan. Dave, tell me if I'm wrong here. And also that, uh, all of our elected officials are up to date on FEMA requirements. So it's going to be pretty, if, if we want to get money for these, uh, emergency warning system, uh, we're going to have to do that.
Yeah, all grants are viewed as partnerships, so every granting entity is looking for something for you to bring to the table as well. And they'll typically incentivize you with something like that to say, all right, you all have to be up, you all have to be trained up to speed. So if we make this investment, it's going to work. Yeah.
And one very brief one, uh, and it's sort of already been addressed, but I was, this was pointed to be actually by my wife. There was the board on Arlington that used to point, that points to fire danger, but for a while it was pointed like off the thing and one was on an extreme and one was off the chart. It's now back to moderate. Uh, am I to understand that the Fire Department is updating it, uh, again now as opposed to it sort of being all haphazardly pointing and?
It should be locked in place.
Okay.
I drove past it yesterday morning, but I didn't check the lock.
I did, I did check it recently and it, I checked it, sorry, I checked it several weeks ago, uh, when this first pointed out to me, there wasn't a lock. And I didn't recheck it since it's been pointed to something sensible. So I just want to encourage that we get it pointed to something sensible because we don't want the residents to stop trusting the sign.
Let me check on that for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Sailors. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
This has to do with, whoops, coordination with the Police Board and the Police Department and the examples that you used. So would you anticipate that the Police Board along would also go to the fire station, um, that you just mentioned, or down to El Cerrito in their Emergency Operations Center if you had a local event? You talked about some type of, um, set of fatalities, uh, with regard to shootings or something like that or weather event. So how do you see the police and the Police Board involved in this activity since we have a major role as well?
That's a great question. So if we did have an event, we would go into what's called Unified Command with the Police Department and we would choose a command post and a spot to have our disaster operations. The first place that I would choose to go is Station fifty-five if it wasn't involved in the event and, uh, the Police Chief and I would coordinate that together. All right, fifty-five is the spot that we're going. And then I, I would assume that that direction would come to you as the Police Board is, as well. Because that is a great question. That's something we should coordinate. And if we are not able to go to fifty-fives because it's not completed yet, or if it's involved close enough to the disaster, then El Cerrito City Hall still makes sense, some of it because the police station is now operating very close to the City Hall and that would work as well. And we would be tied together in unified command anyways. And I hope that answers that question clearly. Yeah. Yeah, and if we, if we have to follow up with the Police Board with a similar presentation, uh, just to make sure that we're coordinated well, that may, that may be in our future. Great, fantastic. I actually just saw the Police Chief today, so I'll bring it up with him. Thank you for the question.
Thanks, Chief Sailors. I really appreciate you following up on this. Um, it's, I think it's good for all of us.
It was a good question. Thank you very much.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator's Report. I, I am not seeing, uh, is he on? Oh, okay. Is he on the, oh, I'm not seeing all the panelists because I'm looking at the participant. Okay, perfect. Johnny, take it away.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm going to briefly go over, uh, some updates and what's to come for the next few months and also some priority initiatives that are, um, ongoing. Let me see if I can see my screen. Just one sec. Are you able to see the display?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the Red Flag Magnet. It's being mailed out to all residents. They're being assembled as we speak, so please expect these to arrive in the mail within, um, the next couple of weeks. Uh, it's a great resource to remind residents to stay aware and alert for red flag warnings. Um, this magnet, it serves as a starting point to subscribe to the Red Flag email list, which provides direct communication of high wildfire risk conditions impacting the community. We currently have five hundred and seventy-two residents subscribed to the list. Uh, initially at the beginning of this year, I stated my goal for twenty twenty-three is to reach seven hundred and fifty subscribers. Um, additional, eighteen additional residents have signed up this month and that was, uh, I think a, a direct result from the KPOA Town Hall. So thank you for, um, subscribing to that and I think it's going to be a great resource for advanced notification to prepare for, uh, wildfire. The door hangers are ready to distribute to two thousand three hundred and eighteen doors. We have a couple dozen community volunteers that have agreed to help distribute the, the door hangers throughout, um, throughout Kensington. Um, I'm finishing up packing these, these black bags, um, this week with, uh, with the door hangers. Um, so the subcommittee decided to delay the distribution until there was heightened wildfire awareness and I think we're getting to that point. Condition, condition, condish, conditions, sorry, it's been a long day, such as warmer, drier condition, um, weather conditions and, uh, the curing of fuels regionally increased the impact of the messaging. So we're, we're getting close to distributing this and I think all the volunteers that have, um, raised their hand to help walk the streets for, for distributing these. So I appreciate that. Um, our El Cerrito Kensington Cert is partnering with La Merinda Cert for training. The fall training sessions begin on, um, September fourteenth. It's a nine-week course conducted on Thursday evenings from six thirty to nine thirty PM and it's going to be held at the Arinda Community Center. Uh, this partnership gives our residents the opportunity to take this course for forty dollars, which is, which is a, a great deal. Um, so if you'd like more information, please contact me at prepare@kensingtonfire.org and I'll connect you to our cert program manager to enroll in the course or answer any questions that you may have. Um, the Community Emergency Preparedness Survey is still open if you have not yet taken it. This allows us to measure preparedness in the community and plan training and education effectively. Um, a public awareness campaign will be released in the coming weeks, encouraging more survey responses, uh, to come through. Uh, the survey responses also help us identify viable volunteers for CERT and other preparedness initiatives. You can take that survey at kensingtonfire.org/survey. We have one confirmed block party planned for July thirtieth on Purdue. Um, two others are in development and have not yet confirmed a date. Um, the biggest concern for residents at the end of Purdue is evacuation and they would like to establish alternate ways out and, um, and if needed, if the roadways are blocked, they'd like to figure out how they're going to get out on foot. So I'll be doing a pre-meeting, uh, scheduled in mid-July with the neighbors and looping in Kensington Police so that the police can chime in on any need for parking changes to improve traffic flow. Um, National Night Out is happening on Tuesday, August first. Uh, registration for block parties is currently open and the deadline to register is July fifteenth. We have four parties confirmed already and those are on Lake Drive, Coventry, Edgewood, Stratford and on Rugby. So please register your block parties at www.kensingtonfire.org/nationalnightout. Um, so the next few slides provide a brief overview of priority initiatives for the next year, covering preparedness, evacuation readiness, prevention and community resilience. Uh, for preparedness, our focus is, uh, going to the household and block level for focusing on improving community while, uh, community-wide preparedness. Uh, this starts with continuing alert notification registration for all residents and promoting a culture of neighbor-to-neighbor collaboration. Uh, the block parties help give a platform and reason for residents to meet and discuss important issues. Uh, so these are also great platforms to introduce CERT training and building relationships among residents. I've had a few calls in the last, uh, month concerning evacuation routes and, um, and parking issues that may impact an evacuation. Residents that live on courts in Upper Kensington are, are asking for specific directions on what to do if routes are cut off or if they are forced to evacuation, uh, evacuate on foot. Um, the residents want an evacuation drill in twenty twenty-four. That's been very clear since we didn't have one this year. And, um, the areas that were not included in the twenty twenty-two evacuation drill want to be included into an extra drill. So I think whether that's an actual physical evacuation drill or if it's an alert signal test, um, it should be considered for twenty twenty-four and start planning early. Um, the Kensington Police Department wants to obtain buy-in from residents regarding parking changes to improve evacuations. Um, I'll coordinate with KPD to help grease the wheel to get parking changes implemented and, and, you know, communicating with residents through the, uh, neighborhood block parties. Home hardening and vegetation abatement is getting more attention this year. Residents have voiced concerns about evacuation routes needing trees removed to reduce the risk of blockage, um, during, in, during an emergency, uh, specifically on Sunset. Uh, but also in Upper Kensington where, where people are, you know, they're living on courts. So one way out is, you know, if, if something is blocked, there's no other alternate ways out. Um, we'll need to put focus on establishing an application process also for the district, uh, replanting grant. Um, Zone Zero information is, is, is coming to focus region-wide. Um, and I know there's been publications in Berkeley that have been focusing a lot on it. So we're going to start focusing a lot on Zone Zero as well, um, and providing more home hardening resources and publications. Um, now that we have one firewise community in Kensington, I'm pushing to use Wildcat Firewise as a uh, template to establish more firewise communities. I'll continue to work with Wildcat Firewise and be a resource to help them be more efficient and effective in their messaging and execution. Uh, La Merinda Cert has mentioned to us to target firewise communities for recruiting volunteers into the CERT program. So now that we have initial training schedule that gives us something to promote, um, so I expect to see volunteers coming forward. Um, we have received several emails asking for volunteer information and I've established a distribution email list um, to start sending volunteer opportunities out into the community. Uh, if there are any questions or if you'd like to contact me, please email me at prepare@kensingtonfire.org. And that is the end of my report.
Thanks, Johnny. Uh, I have a question. Um, a resident asked me where, if and where they could get a copy of the older refrigerator magnet that had the emergency contact numbers and told you who to call, which numbers to call for fire or police if you have a cell phone versus if you have a landline. Do we, and in particular, this came up because I believe the KPOA brochure published the did not publish the correct numbers or at least the most efficient numbers. Um, so do we have a additional magnets left?
Yeah, I, I do have some. Um, I would just need to know where to send it. And I think it also brings up a really good point. Where can we physically put stuff that are accessible to the public? While we don't have a building.
Yeah. That does, good point. Maybe in the, maybe in the custody of the police department at the El Cerrito.
I'll find, I'll find a couple of options. I know there's the, the little libraries that are around the community. Maybe I can stuff a couple of things in here and there. Um, I'd like to start using those for, for preparedness information as well. I think those are really good spots to put stuff. Uh, but yeah, you have the contact information. I can get that to the resident.
So you'd like, would you'd like me to connect you to the, I'll connect you to the resident and then they can provide their information to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Quick question, Johnny. Is the Purdue Block Party the two hundred block of Purdue or the one hundred block of Purdue?
It's the end, I believe, like the, the very northern part.
Like the part that doesn't, that only is open on one end?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, the hundred block. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, comment.
As a board member, uh, Brad Harms, Lieutenant Harms is going to be retiring July twenty-ninth. Uh, and he, of course, was the liaison from the police department to the EPC, Emergency Preparedness Committee. And Chief Gangcast has indicated that he is going to assign a new liaison to the committee after, uh, Lieutenant Harms retires. So you'll have at least another liaison to work with on evacuation planning and hopefully on parking issues as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Johnny.
Thank you.
Hey, let's see where we are now. Okay, there is no old business, so we move into new business. Um, and this is an updated financial forecast. Um, Mary, do you want to introduce it and then, okay, go.
Yes, I'll introduce. Um, thank you. We have an updated financial forecast and we've been working, uh, for a few months with Bill Zanoni. He's a financial consultant. We, uh, entered into a contract months ago and we've been going, um, through updating information that we initially started, uh, a financial forecast with NHA advisors as part of the Public Safety Building and then knew that that obviously feeds into the budget preparation. So we wanted to do it for that purpose and then to also see how um, we need to look at, uh, the future for the Public Safety Building budget, which is in progress as far as an update goes as well. But right now we have an updated forecast that Bill Zanoni is here to present and walk us through this evening. Um, the, uh, finance committee met on June sixth and were able to, uh, ask a lot of questions and, um, go through. We made some revisions based on that meeting. And so Bill can walk us through. He's got presentations and I think he's going to pass out copies. Um, and we've got it up here on the screen.
Good evening, I'm, uh,
I'm Bill Zanoni. I, um, as you already said, I have been working, uh, with Mary over the last couple of months to, um, develop a financial forecast. This is a five-year forecast. Maybe if we can just kind of start with why we do this. So the purpose of doing a financial forecast is to uh, really to demonstrate financial responsibility, both at the board level and at staff level. It's a, a tool. It's a fiscal, uh, planning tool to hopefully look into the future, um, identify potential issues and then, uh, most importantly, develop um, a corrective action plan with the goal of, of avoiding or at least reducing the risk of, of a fiscal crisis. The key to this, as I said, it's a tool, a spreadsheet, uh, it's pretty user-friendly. And for it to be effective, it needs to be, uh, reviewed and updated periodically. At least a year, every year, if not more often than that, and certainly, um, as, as things change. So the, the financial forecast that, that you have, um, in your, in your packet, the city name is based on, there we go. The assumptions, uh, related to, um, revenue and, and in the case of Kensington Fire Protection District, your main source of revenues, property tax, about ninety-five percent of the revenue that you receive is property tax revenue and that's really important because, um, whereas a city has multiple sources of revenue and they get revenue every month, your main source of revenue comes in pretty much twice a year. You get your about half, about half in December or January and then most of the rest of it in April or May. So it's really important that you have a cash cushion to cover your operating expenses, um, for the first half of the fiscal year until you get your next infusion of cash, property tax. So for this agency, revenue and timing of revenue is really key. For operating expenditures, uh, the, the major, uh, operating expense uh, for the Kensington Fire Protection District is a contract with the city of El Cerrito and that accounts for I believe about eighty-five percent of your operating budget. So that is a key thought that, uh, that eats up a good portion of the revenue that you receive. Uh, the other assumptions that are in this, uh, financial forecast are capital purchases. We, we assume that you would be setting money aside for, uh, to build up a reserve for the purchase or replacement of rolling stock. Uh, and also funding for the public safety building. There is a, a figure that's in this with seven point nine million dollars, which is the amount that's in this forecast right now. I know Mary is working on that and that number may be revisited. Uh, and it'll be easy to adjust this. We have an updated number. And then, um, the key number, which is the bottom line, is your reserves. Going forward, um, when we look at your revenues, your expenditures, the net of those is your reserves. And we'll walk through those and, um, see how those, how those look going out five years. We went out five years. You can do a, you can do a ten-year forecast. You can do a twenty-year forecast. But the further out you go, the less reliable it is. So I think the norm is five and as long as you update it watching it, you're, you're, you're good. So this is the, the revenue portion of the five-year forecast and it's kind of hard to see, but you can see that your, uh, your projected revenues this fiscal year are about five point six million dollars. We've assumed that, uh, property tax revenue is going to increase at a rate of four percent a year. One of the goals, I think, uh, with a forecast like this is to, uh, use assumptions that are realistic. You don't want to be overly optimistic, uh, especially with revenues. Revenues will, should, unless we're in a, an economic downturn or recession, your property tax revenue should go up at least two percent. Uh, we've assumed four percent. That is a, a realistic expectation. If they come in higher in certain years, that's good. Hopefully they will not come in less. So I think that is a realistic number. Given that increase, uh, your revenues will increase, uh, we're projecting from about five point six million dollars this fiscal year uh, up to uh, six point seven million dollars in five years. So that's a good. Looking at, um, looking at expenditures, your operating expenditures. In the, in the document that you have, there's a, a summary where we kind of rolled everything up and then behind that is a, a line item detail. So this is a detail of your operating expenditures and you can see you've got salaries and benefits, all your, your different line items for operating expenses. And then within these, you want to really drill down. Actually see the individual components of those. But then the main line on here is the El Cerrito contract. So what we have plugged in for the El Cerrito contract for next fiscal year is four point one million dollars and that's the amount that El Cerrito has told you will be. So that is, that is a good number. Um, and then going out for the next four years, we've assumed an increase, uh, in that contract of eight percent a year. That is, uh, consistent with what we have seen over the past several years. So the bottom line for your operating expenditures for this year, your operating expenditures um, are projected to be about four point eight million dollars. By the time we get out to the end of the five-year period, your operating expenditures will be six point five. So that's one thing to keep in mind is that your revenues are growing about four percent. The main driver for your expenditures are growing at, projected to grow at eight percent. On the capital expenditure side, we are, uh, we're projecting that, uh, they're going to be putting two hundred, going up to that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year aside for rolling stock and that, that'll go into a reserve. Will build, build up for replacement. We've assumed that the, uh, public safety building will be completed next fiscal year and what's in here right now is, uh, an estimated total cost of seven point nine million dollars. Again, that, that will be adjusted as additional information is available. And then, um, we've got the debt service in here for the loan on that building. So we've got a, a partial payment next fiscal year and then uh, the full annual payment of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars beginning in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And we've assumed the drawdown of the proceeds of the loan for the facility this year. So what, what you can see from the, on the bottom line for your fund balance, uh, we're starting the ten million, uh, ten million, three thousand dollar is the number that ties to the audit that you just accepted. That's the total fund balance for the district and that, uh, that number drops as we go out down to a projected six million dollars uh, by the end of the five-year period. So if you go to the next, the next slide, with the fund balance, what, um, what I assumed in here is that beginning in What I assumed in here is that beginning in twenty-one, twenty-two. I wasn't sure if it was twenty-one, twenty-two or twenty-two, twenty-three, but I dropped the. The El Cerrito contract reserve to. To six months. And I, and I've assumed that it would remain at six months through the end of the five year period. That's, that's important because you can see by time we get to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Your general fund reserve is projected to be. Four million dollars. Of that four million dollars. Two point eight million represents six months of your El Cerrito contract, so if that is. Board policy to earmark that money, that leaves you. One point two million dollars left. For, for cash flow purposes, six months of your, six months of your. Operating budget at that point is about three point two million dollars. So you will be. Getting into your reserves at that point during the first six months of the year to cover your, to cover your. Operations. A lot of numbers, but what I tried to do on this chart is to just kind of show you where we're headed, so the. The top, the top line and that's also. Blue it up here. The top, the blue line is a general fund projected reserves, so you can see that the reserves. Were building up, they, they dropped, they will drop next year as you draw down funds for the, for the building. And then they will slowly drop. Over the next four years. The green line is your, your capital fund and you can see the beginning in twenty-three, twenty-four, that's building up for your rolling stock. Reserve. The line to really watch is that black dotted line, that is the El Cerrito contract reserve. And you can see that if we, those. Blue line with the purple line on here and the black line are. Headed to the same direction, so if we, if we were to run this, just run this graph out a couple more years. Those lines would cross and when that happens, what that means is you would not have. Sufficient reserves. To meet your six month requirement, so it's just something to watch and to be. To be aware of and. It's a, it's a trend. To plan for. And with that, be happy to answer any questions, I can, this was reviewed in pretty in detail with the finance committee. Weeks ago, I think we had, we got some, some good input from the committee, some suggestions and the changes that were recommended. Been incorporated with the. Yes, sir.
I, I didn't quite understand your, your conclusion when you said that. This fund balance projection shows that in five years, we'd, we'd have no.
It is, what I, what I attached. To this chart is a fund balance projection, the numbers are the same as. In your report, yes.
Is, is this different from this?
The same.
Yeah, okay.
But the second page, you've got the detail behind that. And in your, in your agenda packet, the numbers, the ending balances are the same, what I tried to do. On this worksheet is to show you that, is to break out the general fund. Reserves between what I'm calling unassigned. And set aside for. The El Cerrito contract. So by the time we get out to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Your general fund. Reserves are projected to be four million dollars, right, right? Of that four million dollars. Two point. Eight million represents six months of the El Cerrito contract, so that is a, that is a set aside. That leaves you about one point two million dollars.
Okay.
And at that point, your, your. Your operating, half of your operating cost, six months of your operating cost are about three point two million, so. All I'm saying is at that point, you've got, if you don't, if you were not going to touch that two point eight million, the El Cerrito reserve. You don't have three point two million cover you. For that first six months on a cash basis. You've got the reserves. Between July and September. You will, if these numbers were right spot on, you'd have tapped into your reserves. On a cash basis. Cover the first couple months, first six months.
Did, did I hear you right that, that the, the bottom line is that the, the blue line is equal to the sum of the black line and the green line?
No, I think they're all different.
No.
Is the general fund.
Yeah.
The green line is the capital, they're separate.
That's the rolling stock reserve.
The black line is the, the black line represents the six month. Reserve for El Cerrito.
The black line is a part of the green line, in other words. Okay.
No.
Green line, it's separate.
I think all three of these lines are totally separate.
So the total funds is the sum of these three lines then?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a reason why you didn't set aside money? Or the replacement of fire trucks?
The money for the. Set aside for the replacement of the fire trucks is the green line.
Oh, that is a green line, okay, alright.
So that, that balance is projected to.
Oh, that's the capital.
At the end of the five year period. Could be about two million dollars.
I guess I have, I have many thoughts, but I don't want to, to, to just sort of fill the air. I, I really appreciate you laying all the numbers out, I think it was really useful to have everything sort of laid out in a clear manner, particularly. This sheet is especially nice to see. Obviously, we'll have to update this as we get more concrete numbers going forward. You know, the, the exact timeline of conclusions is extremely sensitive to the particular growth factors of. Obviously, if your expenses are growing at eight percent and your revenue is growing at four percent, definitionally at some point you have an issue. So you know, the, the accuracy of those. Assumptions and the vicissitudes of other things notwithstanding, I did just want to throw out this because. I'm not on the finance committee, so I wasn't chatting with you, but, so when I had seen our recording from the finance committee meeting. In February, the, the, the one that was before the June one, and I was surprised by how much higher the property tax revenue was than. The budgeted and I thought, well, this seems funny because the property tax revenue is. It's very, there's a lot of visibility on it, it's housing turnover plus the two percent increase, so. Separate from all of this, before I realized that you were even doing this, I wanted to see, could I anticipate what? That number would be by looking at home sale history, so I pulled the last, I'll just share my top line conclusions, I pulled the last three. And a half years of home sales data, compared them against the. The previous cost basis or of those homes and. It's actually interesting, so far in this year, calendar year twenty twenty-three, so things that are not reflected at all in thing. We've, the same number of homes turned over in the first half of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two to the number, which is convenient. But the cost basis was disproportionately lower on the homes this year, so actually, based on assuming. That. Assuming, because everything's an assumption, assuming that the year continues kind of like how it's already been for the last six months and it's actually been pretty stable for the last. Eighteen months, we'll actually see an even bigger upside surprise. In our revenue this coming fiscal year, which would be great, I love. Planning for four percent and being surprised at ten percent every day. So, so that's, that's encouraging, I also was curious because I. Have been trying to sort of wrap my brain around the finances, obviously, I've, I've been on the board a lot less long than several of the members of the board, so I. Looked at the history of the El Cerrito contract going back several years. And I did some regression analysis to try to figure out if I could predict. The increases and to an extremely good. Number, if you model starting in twenty eighteen as a six and a half percent increase annually, you get extremely close. To what it has been for the last, well, since that period. With a big jiggle in one year when it was two percent and the next year was twelve percent. So I also like planning for eight percent because I, I agree with you that a more conservative estimate is. I mean, you want to stress test, you don't want to say, well, I picked the best outcome and it, it all looks good, so I, I really appreciate sort of all the input you had here. And I think it's a nice. Early conservative analysis and frankly, I found it very encouraging for the district's financial situation. So, so all of those words to say, I really appreciate all the effort we did this, I assume. We have this Excel spreadsheet somewhere so that we can update with actual numbers. Great, so yeah, those were a lot of things, but thanks, Bill.
Well, the flip side to the rosy scenario and property taxes is something that we talked about at the finance committee meeting. Something that happened in two thousand nine where there was a recession, property values were divat. What do you call it? You know what?
Went down, yeah.
Everybody's actual down in a case of from years.
Sure, yes, absolutely, of course, there's always a downside of. You don't want to overlearn, you know, recency bias being what it is, it's not all recessions in which home price is going down. More, perhaps more importantly, and designate there was a housing crisis which precipitated a recession, so I think in this cases where you have housing crises, then you really do have a. Big hit to your house values, general recessions that don't come with housing crises maybe not quite as.
I think that, that's just a reason why it's.
To be conservative.
Be realistic, but conservative.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's what I said, I like, I like four percent, I think it's a reasonable number to use, especially if we, if we upside ten percent this year, then we have a lot of room to downside in the future to even out to four percent.
I, unless I'm reading it wrong, I'm not necessarily seeing rosiness.
Oh.
Looking at the, the net operating surplus. If with the contract projected to increase at eight percent and property taxes projected to increase at four percent. You know, this year we're projecting an operating surplus of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand. And five years from now. One, it's down to a hundred and fifty-two thousand. Which is a very substantial change, decrease in the operating surplus.
Yes, I, I agree, I mean, that is sort of part and parcel, if you assume a four percent increase in your revenue and an eight percent increase in your expenses, it has to. That has to get smaller. Obviously, as Bill mentioned, a five year window is sensible because predicting the future past that is, oh, if we could do that, we'd be in a good shape. Financial, yeah, exactly, so I.
Ten million dollars, that July, we're projected six million.
Right, well, the PSB is part of that, PSB is a big part of that, but. Yeah, I guess what I was saying is that if, if in five years we still have. Operating surpluses even in what I would, even in what I would call a. Very fairly conservative assumption of.
After you add in setting money aside for capital and paying the debt service. You can see it's.
Ah, yes, I see, ah, right, so I see, so the operating budget is, is, is going, sorry, the operating budget surplus is decreasing. And the capital outlay for the rolling stock is increasing and, and eventually those will, okay. Okay, so that's. Still not especially concerning to me, five years. It's a thing to watch, I, I'm not, I, I hope you're not proposing that we need a property tax or a partial tax right now to stave off this in five years. But yeah, no, I mean, I think it seems like it's definitely something to keep an eye on, but I, I don't know. Larry, it seems like it's, looks pretty good to me.
I didn't hear anyone proposing a parcel tax.
Oh, no, I was just, I was saying, what do you, what do you. You said it's, it's concerning, but what's the, what concern are you addressing? Or what is the address, what is the resolution of the concern?
Well, what would your, so that's not very much, so we have some. Rather ambitious projects that the district is considering sirens and. We're really hoping that this. Five year forecast will help us put all of those projects in perspective and. I guess as we'll get to later, our, our current reserve policy is to keep twelve months on reserve for the El Cerrito. Contract and this scenario only assumes a six month reserve.
Well, my understanding was that reserve policy was set when it, when the, when we did contractually have to have a twelve month reserve and when we went to move it to six months. The board failed to vote on that. I mean.
It's, it's now six months.
Yeah, the, the, this board failed to change our policies to reflect that it's now six months.
Yeah, I think there's a question about whether it's wise to keep it permanently at only six months, it had been at twelve months since two thousand nine. I had heard some concern expressed by El Cerrito management that they had expected that after the public safety building project. Was complete, we would start rebuilding that reserve back up to the, to the twelve month level, so. I'm trying to take my, my personal outlook on this is to take it sort of in a big picture perspective about, you know. Is it satisfactory to go forward into the future with? Just a six month reserve policy for El Cerrito when. The termination clause is eighteen months, for example, not that I expect that we're going to terminate, but.
I guess part of the, I, I agree with everything you're saying and I, I think the reason why we. I mean, part of the reason why it was moved from twelve months to six months in the contract was explicitly so that. I mean, previously before the PSB project, we had extremely large reserves that easily accommodated in twelve months. And the whole point of reducing it to six months was so that we could use that money for the PSB project and not have to borrow as much. So the, the fact that we don't have twelve months now makes total sense because we explicitly made it six months so that we could. Get by with just six months and, and save some money on that side, so.
I, I, I think you have to keep a historical perspective here, when we first took out this contract. The fire district was in dire straits and, and, and was. In jeopardy of going broke. And that's why they, they decided to contract out the services to the El Cerrito Fire Department. So El Cerrito at that point wanted an entire year because they weren't sure we were going to be around for an entire year. At that point was many years ago, that was twenty years ago and. Our situation is different, El Cerrito's situation is different. And I think that's why El Cerrito decided that six months was sufficient. But we're not, we're, we're no longer in, these projections clearly show we're no longer. In dire straits and, and in, in possibly going broke, that's. That's, that's not the, not in the cards, so I, I think a six month reserve. Is a reasonable thing to ask for at this point.
Green line is the capital fund, that is everything. So the, the black line is the portion of the general fund.
Oh, it is. Okay, so, so the black line is part of the blue line. Okay. Right, absolutely. And actually, uh, though you did make an excellent point also about the, uh, the cash flow situation. That is definitely something that we could, you know, be looking into. Uh, I know, or at least from my, I did have a chat uh, with David Aranda on the KPPCSD at one point. Um, because I was trying to understand their budget and he says that for their district, they actually uh, and maybe you said our district gets this cash twice a year. Uh, their district apparently gets a pot of money told to them at the beginning of the fiscal year that they draw from. They don't actually necessarily have the money literally in their bank account and they pay out of that. And apparently, so they, I don't know how this works because I'm not a finance district expert, but somehow they don't have a cash flow issue. They have some others. Oh, maybe that's. I didn't think they pay any debt for it, but he, he described it to me because I was trying to understand their budget and he said, it's really strange, but somehow they do this and I've never had this. So uh, we should find out uh, what the KPPCSD is doing, uh, if uh, whatever they're doing is a useful way of avoiding this cash flow issue. Um, maybe we should consider doing something like that.
I have a couple of comments. Um. First on uh, the set aside, the six months. I, I, I have a problem leaving it at six months if in fact we are talking about consolidation and becoming part of a unified um, government here in Kensington. The problem, the, the difference between our situation and that of the police department is that uh, we have a fixed obligation to pay El Cerrito going out to 2030. Um, yes, of course, we could terminate that contract, but we have no, no place else to go, so that's most unlikely. So I think it's extremely important that if in fact we are going to talk about consolidation, I'm sure this will come up later in our discussion, but I can say it now and, and not repeat myself. Uh, if we're talking about consolidation, we have to make sure that that obligation that we have for El Cerrito is included in any consolidation going forward. That's.
Really a hundred percent.
No, no, but my point is, is that um, we have been doing that by setting aside 12 months. All right. Uh, you're saying that maybe six months is okay. I, I would much prefer, I would feel much more comfortable if we started to gradually reinstate that 12, 12-month set aside. Uh, the, the other thing that I wanted to talk about though is um, is what this forecast is based upon. This forecast is based upon the assumptions that were made by Bill Hansel back in December. Where he budgeted uh, total costs to complete the public safety building, including um, the, the cost to relocate during construction at almost eight million dollars. And I, and, and, and this, this forecast is based upon that. But I think that um, I think that we are going to see that those costs are going to be well exceeded when everything is said and done. Uh, I put together some numbers for some of the people on the um, on the finance committee to show that I think that there are some costs that we haven't included, that uh, need to be included going forward. And particularly the fact that it now looks like the construction of the public safety building originally intended to be completed in March of 2024 is now slated for possibly June and maybe longer. Um, so I just want to point out that I think that in addition to the costs that we're looking at in this budget, we are going to, in the next three to six months, see that those costs are in need of being increased. And that will further deplete the amount of money that we will have. So I strongly favor that we do have another finance committee meeting sooner rather than later to talk about a, uh, what, what I, what I think would be a more realistic uh, expectation of what this uh, public safety building is going to cost us and factor that into these numbers so that we can see where we might be uh, based upon what it looks like it's going to work out to.
Sorry, I have a question. My brain is maybe just a little bit slow with catching up to um, all of this. So I'm looking at the operating expenditures again. I'm just looking at the furthest out projection 2027, 28 operating and um, after expenses, you show a net operating um, surplus of a hundred and fifty-two thousand nine forty-one. But am I correct? And you might have said this already. I think I might know the answer, but that is before making a contribution from that operating surplus into the capital fund for that year for the rolling stock. And when we, is it that when? Oh, and before the debt. Okay, so that shows basically an operating deficit then in that particular year after making those two contributions. An operating deficit of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. So we first start seeing a deficit in 26, 27. And then that means that. So what do we dip into? I mean, it, it doesn't become a deficit. It, it becomes a deficit from the loan payment. The rolling stock reserve is theoretically optional, but we've always done it. Um, so how do we, do we clear that deficit from?
Says the unassigned general fund.
From the reserves. And this does not take any into account any further contributions to the building maintenance fund that we've always had. So we had been um, every year contributing whatever was available from the operating surplus after contributing to rolling stock toward the building maintenance fund. I think the general idea was that that was going to go toward the renovation. But it, it also doesn't seem like we can reasonably think that we aren't going to have to do any maintenance on the public safety building.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, um, let's see if there's any public comment on. Only two people on the line right now. And um, anything? Thank you very much, Bill. That is very, very illuminating. So the next item on the agenda is um, the budget. So go back to Mary for that.
Thank you. Um, tonight we have the uh, fiscal year 2023, 24 preliminary budget. This is in your packet. Uh, we have reviewed this budget with the finance committee and incorporated uh, their input. What, what you'll see in the numbers tables is that they essentially come from the long-term financial forecast. So we made sure that those mirrored one another. So that's where the financial information is coming from. So what we already talked about are all of the numbers that are included in the budget. So what we would be looking for uh, would be that the board take the following actions, which would be to approve resolution 202307, adopting the preliminary combined revenue, operating expense and capital improvement budget for fiscal year 23, 24. Um, and then provide any uh, direction as needed. So the one component of um, the budget where I could use uh, the board's input. We have um, a, a contract with the emergency preparedness coordinator that we have that expires June 30th. And so we have continued to budget for that. And then as the general manager, I would continue to um, s- sign for that. But I wanted to get input on continuing with that and to see if I have the board's um, concurrence on negotiating that next year contract with our uh, emergency preparedness coordinator. Um, I wasn't here when that position initiated, so I need to just get the board's input on that. And then as far as the rest of the budget document, this is the same document that was put into place several years ago. So the narrative has just been updated and it's all the same. Essentially, I need to get some statistics um, updated for on fire staff. Um, we have a page where we put operating um, information for um, certifications and things like that that will get updated. Um, and then the rest of the financial tables, tables are the ones from the um, financial forecast. So um, it demonstrates that we have adequate funding and as we saw in the financial forecast. So what we want to do with that forecast is we'll be looking at what happens the next couple of years with revenues and expenditures. And maybe the revenues will increase higher. That would be great. Expenditures a little bit less. Um, but we at least have these next four years, five years to start looking at what changes might be needed, if any. So it gives us that, that's a great planning tool. So uh, with that, I'm um, open to answering any questions, um, taking input from the board.
Yes, I, I, I have a question and it has to do with the line item, water system improvements. Which is uh, under the general category of outside professional services. Traditionally, this has been a $10,000 a year line item. And it's, I notice it's marked assume no additional costs and I think that's a mistake. Um, this, this money is budgeted, not always spent, but it's budgeted. So that to give the chief the discretion that uh, uh, if the East Bay Municipal Utilities District is tearing up a road and it happens to be in the area where uh, where the water system is deficient and we need another hydrant, that's an excellent time to do it because we don't have to pay EB mud to dig up the road. Uh, and uh, on the other hand, if, so it's a difference between $50,000 for a hydrant and $5,000 for hydrant. I think, I'm not sure of those numbers. And um, uh, assume, we say assume no additional costs. I know that, that's, we're going to be improving the, the water system in Kensington uh, long past uh, uh, long into the future. And I, I would also like to point out that the fact that we made these improvements to the water system is why we got an ISO one rating. It's a big factor. And uh, it's, it's also very important, and that's of course is reflected in fire insurance rates. It's also very important to residents that they have a adequate water system so that if they have a fire in their structure, it can be contained in a, uh, to help the loss held to minimum. So I would strongly urge just to put that $10,000 back in the budget so that we can continue to build the system out. Um, it's not a lot of money, but uh, uh, it's one of these things where, where if, if we, otherwise we'd have to have a, an emergency meeting to authorize money for the fire hydrant and, and uh, it's, it's not going to be spent on anything other than ten, than uh, than fire hydrants. It's not, it's not going to be spent on uh, uh, anything other than fire hydrants. I, I would urge that we put that money back in the budget. Thank you.
Especially since we often don't spend it, uh, and we have the space in the budget that seems sensible.
Yeah, we can definitely put that back in. That's not any problem.
I think the bigger question, maybe it's not a budget question, but it sort of is. I, yeah, I think number one, deciding the correct amount to put in the budget is 10,000 enough. But then how do we operationalize actually getting the new fire hydrants? I mean, how does that recommendation get made? It, we don't have to solve that problem while we're talking about the budget. But they've been doing a lot of work around Kensington and have we lost any opportunities lately to put in new fire hydrants? Like who, who is the one that has their eye on that problem?
The, the East Bay Municipal uh, Utilities District knows to, or at least used to know, I think they still know, to contact the chief of Kensington if they're doing work in Kensington and ask if, if any uh, hydrant improvements are done. We did an enormous amount of work with the East Bay Municipal Utilities District and I, I, this was about 15, 20 years ago, that we had no water system in this town at that point and, and they put in a hydrant system. Um, so they know to contact our chief if they're doing work. They also know to contact our chief if they're doing work because he's got to figure out another way of getting engines to fires uh, once they dig up the road. So that's the operational. I, it, it's totally up to the chief to make the decision whether or not to put in the hydrant. And the municipal district, I think they're, they know to contact both the chief of police and the chief of fire, and the fire chief when they're going to go digging up their road. And yes, I am very surprised in the last couple of years that we haven't had a lot of e- expense putting in hydrants because they have been digging up roads in Kensington like crazy. And uh, but maybe they only dug up the roads where the hydrant system was good. I don't know.
I know that they're doing the top of Beloit now just because it's near where I live. Um, or there are signs out saying that they're about to start. Do you recall, chief, if they've reached out to you at all? Appreciate it.
I mean, I, I have no problem. We, I, I want to sort of preface the finance committee's work. We had a almost three-hour meeting. And we really didn't even get into the line items of the budget at all because we were, we had the audit presentation, the OPEB um, accounting, um, and then the financial plan and lots of questions. And then we did kind of run out of everybody's time, so. So it wasn't a deliberate removal of that item from the budget, at least by the committee.
I don't, I, Adam, care. So what is the procedure for modifying, if we wanted to add 10,000 to the budget for water improvements at this stage, uh, do we?
So we could just um, a- as part of the motion to adopt the resolution, we could just say with that modification, that we would adopt the resolution.
Uh, I have a minor typo um, in the narrative, strategic planning and goals. Uh, maintain fire station number 65, should be 55. Unless you're going to start doing Richmond's fire station.
So first of all, Mary, um, you know, we didn't get very far at the finance committee meeting, but I, I want to compliment your approach. You mentioned that your philosophy is that the budget document should basically contain everything anyone needs to know about the fire district. And um, I think you've done a great job just capturing the fire district from every perspective. It's very, very useful.
You're here.
Thank you. And there's always more information that we can include. So any feedback in the future is completely welcome.
Um, I can respond to your question about the emergency preparedness coordinator contract. I mean, I, the, with regard to the structure of a foregoing contract, it, I think it's kind of confusing to the public potentially that it's a fixed fee contract. And everyone else who essentially um, is engaged to work with the district uh, reports time sheets and, and time spent. So I mean, my personal recommendation, the rest of the board can weigh in, would be to move to something more conventional like that. And it also, I'm not sure if it actually fits the definition anymore of an independent consultant because they, my understanding is that independent consultants will typically set their own scope of work and don't really take direction. Um, but I think that this is more of a, a give and take kind of engagement as, as far as I'm able to tell by, by witnessing it. I mean, there might be another um, another sort of contractual method to engage um, Johnny.
We could look at uh, doing it in that way, but um, he does and has uh, previously put together kind of a, a plan proposal for the next coming year. Um, so that is more independent in nature. Um, but we can evaluate what's better for that position or function, whether, you know, a contract or um, uh, position. I know originally way back when we were looking at a potential position, but um, the function seems a little bit different. Um, and especially in this fixed fee. So that's not typical for some of the other, like the public safety building contracts or, you know, time and materials, uh, we get billed uh, fees hourly. These, so um, I can look at um, the approach on the contract versus position with that contract expiration coming up. Perhaps I can extend that contract through a couple of months. So we could take a look at that. So we have some options there.
Just curious other input from other board members. That is just my own personal input.
I mean, it sounds very reasonable.
So on a contract, contract, but hourly, looking at a, rather than a fixed fee contract. So then with the, yeah, I can work on renewing that contract in that way. And we'll keep it and we can keep it in the budget for now until I see if there's a different amount. And we'd have the opportunity to revise the budget. With the adoption in September of the final budget.
I would like to highlight that for this coming budget, the El Cerrito contract reconciliation is significantly lower. Like to really commend our fire chief for, for that. And we talked about it at the finance committee meeting. It's no guarantee of future reconciliation fees. But, but every bit helps. So thank you for that.
I, I guess to move things along, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the preliminary budget. With the modification that the $10,000 for the water system improvements be restored to the budget.
Second.
All right. Any public comment on that motion? And in the room, two people on the call, hands raised. All right. So all in favor of adopting the budget resolution as stated in the motion? I?
I.
I.
Don's not with us, so I think that's a four in favor and one absent. So the next item on the agenda is brought forward from the finance committee. And it, it's really just a discussion item to get input from the rest of the board. In terms of, you know, we've put in the packet the existing district reserve policy, which we talked about a bit earlier. It allows for contributions to the rolling stock. Equipment and building replacement costs, which I don't think the replacement costs are relevant anymore. But maintenance costs may very well be relevant. In amounts recommended by the fire chief. And thank you, Mary, for putting that schedule back in the budget, the, the rolling stock schedule going into the future. So we can see where we are. And the reserve account to fund fire protection services for a period of 12 months. So I guess we talked at the finance committee meeting about potentially directing Mary at her discretion to develop a bit more sophisticated reserve policy that may reflect some aspects of cash flow. It may or may not reflect either leaving the El Cerrito reserve at six months. Or building it up over time back to a period of a year. But just in light of the sophisticated five-year projection. We had thought that it would be prudent to consider a bit more thoughtful reserve policy. But we wanted to see what the rest of the board thought, get direction. And in particular, I go back to that note four in the audited financial statement. Right now, you know, the unassigned fund balance for the district is $3 million. And, you know, the non-spendable is only 2,757. And do we want to look at making stronger commitments? To some of our fund balances? These are all the things we thought we might take into account with a, a more sophisticated reserve policy. Jim, did you want to make any? Oh, did you want to add anything to that? Yeah. So we just welcome your thoughts. We thought before asking Mary to work on anything, it really
Yep, you're good.
Should be, you know, some kind of board consensus or, or not?
I, I guess my only comment is, I'd like to know what other districts in the county have as a reserve policy and see that we're in line with them. I mean, it seems to me the last time we were talking about reserves. We, we held back a lot more in reserves than most districts. And I'm not sure why that's justified. Maybe all of the other districts are just running very low to the ground, but, but I, I would, as a part of this, I would like to see a comparison with other fire districts.
I, I personally think that's a, a good idea.
Should we take a break while we're?
Why don't we? Yeah. Cause Jim's not able to.
Yeah, I thought that I, I, well, I watched the meeting and I believe it was September of 2022. And the last proposal to update our policy came up. And I thought that was very reasonable, certainly something more concrete than do something about your, your trucks, your, your engines, some thing. I think would be definitely more appropriate here. I personally think of the and maybe this is not the way other people think of the board policy. It's this sort of like the constitution. It should be modified rarely and it should really indicate key things. So I think enshrining us what was actually in the contract, a six-month reserve in the policies makes sense. But certainly there's nothing stopping us from establishing more robust reserves on top of that. And I think that that would be an excellent idea. And I think spelling out more clearly what we want for the reserves for the rolling stock, I think, sounds like an excellent idea. So I agree with the general intention of formalizing our reserve policy and making things a bit more concrete would be great.
And to include, I think, as Larry suggested, to the extent possible, some survey of what other fire districts do for their reserve policy.
Yeah, I always look at what other agencies do for comparison. So yeah, I can bring that back to the finance committee and then to the board.
Okay. Do we, is that good enough?
That's enough, I think. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Okay. So the next item is item eight D. Consideration of the proposed resolution 2023-08 to join the KPPCSD in partnership and conducting the LAFCO standard financial analysis required to evaluate consolidation or reorganization of the KPPCSD and the KFPD. And yes, Daniel, we're missing a P. So this is, and that was my fault. And it's your item.
Yes. So this came up. Sorry, I gotta pull up my little notes. Where are my notes? Nevermind.
Oh, right. Yeah. Maybe let's let him introduce it.
Oh yeah, I'll just introduce it. So this was in response to the KPPCSD at their May regular meeting. Formally invited the KFPD to participate in the development of a financial analysis to be carried out by a third-party firm in partnership that they were planning on doing. And they wanted us to sort of join them and be party to the discussions with that firm and, and whatnot. I guess I'm going to pull forward a little bit from my consolidation report, but at their June regular meeting, June 8th, they voted to actually go ahead just to concretize what this resolution is about. They voted to go ahead. And start drafting an RFP for that financial analysis. And they said in that meeting that they would like, for example, as part of a, if we want to be partners, that we should have a chance to review and comment on the RFP before it's submitted, either by staff or, or by the board. So that's just sort of a specific example of what they mean by partnership. Per your request, Julie, I, I did have this run by Mary and Mary did run it by district council. Both of them said, yep, this seems totally good. So just wanted to clarify that. So generally speaking, I've also gotten specific assurances from both David Aronda and the consolidation liaison from the KPCSD that they are not asking us for any money. They just want us to be partners and, you know, join them and be participatory in the process. While they go out and find a third-party firm to conduct the analysis. Obviously. Well, I don't necessarily need to go further, but you need to, in order to make a sensible analysis, they have to analyze both the police district and the fire district separately. And then there's a hypothetical combined district. So that's.
Is there a LAFCO document that really spells out the specifications of this analysis? Because it seems like we're sort of aiming in the dark here.
Yes, actually, LAFCO, Luann. I was CC'd on the email. I didn't send the email, but Luann did give David Aronda a specific reference to the government code section that describes what is required for a financial analysis for a reorganization or a consolidation. Furthermore, the list of firms that he said that they're considering and that he's requested sort of preliminary quotes from are all firms that have previously done financial analyses for LAFCO, for Contra Costa LAFCO specifically. So these are, these are firms that are familiar with the process and have previously generated appropriate financial analyses for LAFCO for this specific purpose. So.
And so I, I heard again at the KPPCSD meeting that this is, this analysis is all based on publicly available information.
Yeah, to my knowledge, none of the district's finances are secret. So, so in terms of, you know, what we're spending sort of like what Bill Zanoni prepared for us earlier in the meeting. That's going to include some sort of a calculation on our expenses, our revenues, our reserves, our policies, our services going forward and reasonable expectations for how this will change over time. All of that data is publicly available. So, you know, in principle, if this board really did not want to be participatory in any way, shape or form. The KPPCSD or the third-party firm could file public records act requests to get the data from us if it wasn't available on our website. But I think it'd be a lot easier if we just gave them the data.
Well, is that what you mean by participate? If they ask us for something, we provide it?
Uh, I think it would be that, well, I guess specifically, like I said, they wanted us to look at the RFP and review it. before it was submitted, either staff doing that or, or the whole board could do it if we want to do it that way. So things of that nature, presumably there'll be some sort of report and presentation from the third party firm with their results. And we would want to be included in that presentation, right? You don't necessarily want to be like just for the KPP CSD we would like to be invited to, to be have the opportunity to ask questions. There'll probably, I don't know the nature of this. I obviously I haven't done one of these myself, but I'm imagining that there's probably some back and forth between the firm that's doing the analysis where they might sort of have a request for clarification about specific items. And they might shoot an email to Mary and say, hey, I saw this number. What precisely is this? And, you know, participatory would be, you know, as a general statement, Mary probably doesn't answer people who send her random emails about our district's finances. So she would probably need direction from this board to, to respond to something like that. I guess unless it's a
Yeah, I mean, if I get asked for something, most of the time it's on the website, but I can clarify questions.
Yeah. So it's things that I imagine things of that nature. It's, yeah, just generally to be participatory and not even financially. So, but.
I want to let others speak up, but I, at some point I have a very, very fundamental question to ask you, but I like to let others monopolizing. Do you have anything you want to comment or ask Daniel about?
Daniel, I have down at where now therefore be it resolved in that section right there.
Yep.
You have this sentence that says, accept the offer to join the Kensington Police Protection Community Service District in partnership in conducting the financial analysis of evaluating consolidation or reorganization.
Yes.
We are, you're asking us to, to to join with them in conducting this. But at this point, we don't know exactly what it is that they are going to be looking at in this analysis that has to be undertaken. In their board meeting, Dave Spath did talk about a suggested approach, which was that both boards would look out for, would that this analysis would include a five year projection as to where these two boards would stand financially over a five year period. And something like that I would be interested in taking a look at. But beyond that, I don't, you know, I want, I want to know what it is that we would be joining with. Are we going to be joining with a board that is going to be undertaking significant financial costs because they have to find a place for their police department?
That's not in the scope of this, this resolution. It's join them in conducting a financial analysis. This is nothing about us actually committing to consolidating or reorganizing with the KP CSD.
Yes, doesn't, doesn't that financial analysis have to consider the financial feasibility of an organization?
Yes.
When consolidation occurs.
Yes, that, that's the purpose of the financial analysis.
Right? And
what's?
I think we have with our five year budget projection, I think we have a reasonable, some reasonable assumptions on where we are going to be. But I don't, I'm not so sure that the KP CSD does.
Correct. That is the whole purpose of this analysis. Is you want to have an analysis of both districts done by the same firm. So that they're using the same set of models. And you want them to compare the districts as they are separately and the district says they are together. So there's, there's no commitment. Zero cannot emphasize that enough. There is zero commitment in either this resolution or anything that I'm suggesting that we do beyond finding out what those numbers are. And the district council has borne this out that there's this is all fairly innocent.
I've been hanging out with lawyers too, too long, I, I'm afraid. First of all, that sentence needs a little work. Directors of Kensington Fire Protection District does hereby wishes to accept the offer.
Yes, there's a grammatical typo.
That's how they talk in Mississippi, but not in California. But more importantly, when you say in partnership and conducting the financial analysis, if we're, that means we're promising to pay for it.
No, it does not.
Sure it does. If, how could you, how could you be in partnership to conduct an analysis and not pay for it?
So, Daniel, could you calm down a little?
So as far as this resolution, I, I don't see where it commits us to paying for part of it, but that's, that's just not part of this resolution. But typically, if you partner on something, you would, but that's not specifically stated.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned that it commits us to committing staff time. Like, oh, well, all of a sudden, maybe the KFPD could write the RFP or could you take this over? Yeah, I mean it. I don't understand the partnership portion of it. If this is a LAFCO standard independent analysis that neither district has any input on what the elements of the analysis are. I don't understand the partnership element, especially if, as you say, they're not asking us to pay for any of it.
Well, there are a number of things that I could point out. But let's, let's start on one side and move through them. So as referenced, and as referenced by Mary and district council, this does not commit the board spending any money on this financial analysis. In fact, explicitly, the KPP CSD has said they do not are not expecting and are not asking and are not requesting in any way that we participate financially. They have budgeted an amount in their budget specifically for this item that matches the highest quote that they got when they were originally making preliminary quotes. So I don't see why there'd be any reason to think that they are be changing that tune now. And it doesn't matter because we're not committing to spending that money now anyway. So if they were to come back and ask us for money, we could just say, no, and then that's the end of it. Secondly.
Can I just follow though? I listened to their meeting and what I heard was the three newly elected directors saying, well, we'll just do this whether the fire district wants to join us or not. But the board did not specifically say, we will pay for this analysis 100% by our, our district. They, they didn't vote on that and they didn't say that, that I heard.
Well, they did adopt a budget item specifically with that amount for the total cost of the financial analysis. And then I will admit that I've had one-on-one conversations as the consolidation liaison with the KPP CSD's consolidation liaison and also their general manager. And they have both reiterated that they are not asking us for money, that they have budgeted for us doing this all by themselves. If the, this board wants to refuse to participate in any way, shape or form with even fact finding, if even basic numbers analysis, this board does not want to be participatory in, then yeah, I imagine that the KPP CSD will do all the math themselves or pay for someone to do all the math themselves for them for this town. Certainly that is a very real possibility if we don't want to participate. I guess I'm a little surprised. I guess I'm a little surprised also that, that, well, for example, you Julie aren't interested in doing this financial analysis or having this financial analysis occur with participation from the KFPD, partly because you had mentioned in the Kensington outlook when you were running that specifically that you wanted to see the financial analysis.
So Daniel, have I yet said I'm not interested in having?
Sorry, I, I don't.
No, I just want you to not put words in my mouth.
I retract that. I, I wholeheartedly apologize. I, I honestly, I sincerely, I apologize.
But it does raise an opportunity. Let me get to my fundamental question and tie it into what you just said.
Please.
It's one thing for candidates to take personal positions as a candidate. But that doesn't mean that that candidate then speaks for the board that they serve on. And what a board.
Oh, like you said again, I didn't understand.
A candidate can say things or write things during an election. But once the candidate is elected, they're part of a body of five. A board of governors of five and decisions are made by a majority. And so, you know, I had also said that I wanted to know the full cost of housing the Kensington Police Department, you know, before making any final decisions, but that didn't happen either. And I did not have the power as a a board member of one to make that happen. But my fundamental question and what is really troubling me is that I, I don't know what the problem is that we're trying to solve. And the problem is not named in this resolution. For example, I've read quite a bit about the consolidation with Confire and the East Contra Costa Fire District and Rodeo Hercules. They were very clear about what kind of service delivery problems they were trying to solve by investigating consolidation. And all we've done so far is agree to participate in a meeting in which we learned about the process. But our two boards have not come to a joint agreement on what problem exists and what problem consolidation might solve. And what other, assuming both districts agree that there is a problem that needs to be solved. What are some alternative solutions? Right now I'm feeling like consolidation is looking like a solution in search of a problem. And I don't know if our board agrees whether individuals feel one way or not. I don't know if the board agrees that there is actually a problem to solve. This is a very healthy district. We just saw that in our five year analysis. So I would feel more comfortable if there was a really concrete problem laid out that consolidation or reorganization might be one way to solve. There's certainly nothing laid out in this resolution.
That's correct. There's nothing that directly bears on that question, this particular resolution. This particular resolution, as I mentioned, is, is principally about joining with the KPP CSD and getting some facts so that we can make an informed decision pursuant to precisely what you've described. I don't know, I may perhaps it is the position of the other board members that this district as currently constituted is perfect and has no possibility that it could be any better in any way, shape or form, period. So barring that, then there's opportunities to discuss what things could be improved. To, to borrow a Bell Labs mantra, usually what you are going for is better or cheaper or both. So ways in which we could improve the service that this district offers, ways in which we could reduce the cost of those services or maintain them at the same level. These have all been indicated as possible contributing factors for why in our 2009 MSR, it was recommended that the districts consider a government change like consolidation or reorganization. Earlier, when we were discussing the budget, you mentioned that the fact that our reserves were, you know, $50,000 less than, you know, we might expect going forward. Every little bit helps if consolidation could save some money, 50 or a hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't know, making up numbers, but could save some amount of money cheaper. That would, it could, we should find out. So that would be the cheaper side. On the better side, we actually heard the chief mention just earlier in this very meeting that if there was a crisis in Kensington, the fact that we only have a part-time general manager as fantastic as, as Mary is and as the new GM, when we get the new GM will be, they are only a part-time GM and, and that could present a problem in the event of a crisis and a full-time staff member possibly would be on the table in a consolidated district. Again, got to find out the numbers. We're still trying to figure out the facts here. So that's a perfect example of a service improvement that we could have for the district. We could have a better emergency response. If we had a full-time staff member who was available and attending to Kensington's needs. So like I said, my goal is better or cheaper or both. There is a reasonable case to be made and has been pointed out by people who know a lot more about government, government structure than I do. Namely, you know, the people at LAFCO and the people who prepared the MSRs where they recommended these, these options. That it is possible that consolidation or reorganization could save the district, this district or, and also the police district money. It could increase the service level that this district provides. Maybe also the police district too. Nothing wrong with them benefiting as well. But there could be tangible benefits in terms of both service and cost to this district. And I think it's incumbent upon us as the board of directors of this district who have, as you mentioned, a, a commitment to the Kensington Fire Protection District, that we at least find out the numbers behind these things. It's very possible that when we do a financial analysis, as you mentioned, Larry, it's very possible that it, the numbers don't pencil out, that it doesn't save us any money where a full-time staff is not affordable, even in a combined district. Then we'll find that out and we'll say, okay, I guess this doesn't work. And then we won't pursue it further. But the point is we need to get those numbers. We need to find that information. We need to figure out if there are service or fiscal responsibility, excuse me, fiscal responsibility improvements that can be made to this district. And I think that that's really important to investigate fully and thoroughly before any decisions are made. And that's what is attempted to be encapsulated in this very limited in scope resolution, which is not attempting to answer the question this very night about whether or not we want to, we were going to commit to consolidation or reorganization. It is a bare bones statement that just says, we want to find out these numbers in a manner jointly with the KPP CSD. We want to be participatory in that process, even if we are not financially participatory in this process. And we want the people of Kensington to finally get after 20 something years of people discussing this issue to get a real specific concrete numbers for Kensington itself. Our particular cases with the needs for the police board to build a new police station or find some location for them with our needs to maintain rolling stock reserves and reserves for the OCBR contract going forward, with all of our particularities that are unique to us. Does this make any sense? And I want to know that number. And if it doesn't make sense, then we should abandon it. And if it does make sense, then we should consider investigating. And that's all I sorry, I went off on a tangent there, maybe not a tangent, I went off on a roll there, but hopefully that touches on your question or addresses the, the crux of your question.
So you think the financial analysis will define the problem we're trying to solve?
I think the financial analysis will point, I've defined the problem as I see it, which is can this district improve service or save costs by considering government, government reorganization or consolidation with the KPP CSD? That is the problem that I see. Of course, I am only one director. If the rest of the director just do not see that there's any potential for service or fiscal improvements related to consolidation or reorganization, then then that's, then as you say, there's no problem to be solved according to the, the will of the board. And that's the end of it. I have outlined what I think is the problem to be solved. And maybe you or any of the other director, well, down so here, you or any of the other directors may disagree with that.
I, I'd just like to point out that this is a very complicated subject. And it, it needs an awful lot of thought. And it's not gonna, we're not gonna find the answers, but just, just by doing a financial analysis. There's a very, in my mind, at least, there's a very real question of whether or not this is operationally possible. You're talking about simply disbanding this district and letting an already overloaded district take over one more responsibility, one that I think is very important of running a fire department. I don't think right now the numbers matter as much as can you really do that? Do we know of any place where that, that works?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Not in Contra Costa County, you don't.
About 10 miles from Contra Costa County, it does.
Which is?
Mountain House CSD. It's just over the border. Mountain House.
Mountain House. Boy, if we only had to do what Mountain House does, we, we, anyway. That's the kind of information that we also need. Is, is this operation, in my mind, if this doesn't make any sense operationally, if we can't. If this doesn't make any sense operationally, if we can't, if we can't expect one district to, to run these. The fire department, the police department, the parks, garbage disposal. Who, who else, whatever, whatever else they do. Then, then whether it makes sense financially or not, doesn't really matter.
Well, sorry, did you want me to mention? I know we mentioned this the other day when we chatted briefly. There's also the city of Ross and Tiburon, uh, uh, over in near Tiburon and Belvedere, those are cities. They both are about half the size of Kensington. They operate a police department of about six full time police officers and a few extra part time. They contract out for their fire with a local fire district. They operate a parks department and they offer trash. They also, in addition to that, have a public works department because they're a city and a planning department because they're a city. They do all of these things within all volunteer board, I should also add. Of five members who are not compensated, I mentioned the volunteers. So, you know, in terms of an operational perspective. Are there people in the Greater Bay Area, you know? If it's Contra Costa near East County, if it's over the bay on the other side. Near, in Marin County, there are organizations, there are cities even smaller than ours, who are performing all of the duties that. Such a district would, would be carrying out and then some on top of what we were proposing here. So I guess operationally speaking, I think there's clearly proof of concept that it, it could work. And I a hundred percent agree with you that there is a question to be asked, whether or not we want to do that in Kensington. Though I don't think we're going to do that tonight. I don't think we can answer that tonight.
And I don't think you're going to do that as a part of this resolution either.
Uh, no, I think it's a bigger question than even this one resolution. It's a pretty small step in just getting some numbers.
Well, I, I agree with everything that Larry said. I think we said this at the joint meeting. And there's so much more to consider about this concept of dissolving the fire district. After what fifty year history of being a very successful district. There's so much more to consider about taking that irrevocable irreversible move. Than just this financial analysis. And what's really troubling me is. What's the rush? I, I made a short list of all of the unfinished projects that that district has. And, you know, they'll, they'll talk about something, then you never hear about it again. They're two years behind in their audited financials. I don't even see how a financial analysis can even start without current audited financials. Everything I've ever been a part of in my professional life. The first question anyone asks you, whether they're trying to see if you're credit worthy. Or what have you is send us a copy of your last three audited financials. They're two years behind. So I don't even see how they can start this analysis. Which is why I'm glad that they're agreeing to take responsibility for it. Because I, I, I mean, my guess is that they won't even be able to start. And I, I just don't really fully grasp what is the rush? Are they, what's the rush?
I don't think there's a rush. I think there's always things that this district and their district are involved in, projects that they're beginning. This is going to be a long process in terms of, it's going to be a deliberative process and it's going to require a lot of consideration. Of financial numbers, values, operational concerns, these things all have to be discussed and at length. You have to start somewhere, you have to start at some point. I don't think this is rushed. This issue has been floating around Kensington for twenty something years. I think that they, you, you, you need to start sometime. Otherwise you never start anything. So I think they are saying, we're interested in this project. Dave's bath has been a wonderful liaison from them and keeping me updated on sort of what they're thinking is. And I think they just want to, you know, start, you know, taking these steps. I don't think anyone's, uh, no one that I've spoken to from the KPP CSD side. And certainly no one of this board is suggesting that we consolidate next month or next year. So, you know, you gotta, if it's a five year process or whatever, hopefully not five years. But if it's a two plus year process to get even the numbers and everything straight, you know, you got to start that at some point, otherwise it's always two years away.
I guess the, the, the other, the, the other thing that's, is sticking in my craw. And, and maybe it's just the way you reported it, but you said that. The police district doesn't, is willing to pay for the whole thing. They are already taking out the, um, they are already drafting a re, re, request for quotation. They're ready to go with it. So what is, what is it we're supposed to do? We're not gonna, uh, we're not gonna pay for it. We're not gonna, we're not writing their request for quotation.
I think they just.
This doesn't sound like a partnership to me. Yes, go ahead.
I agree. Called for public comment yet, so please just wait. I, I agree, there's nothing about this that feels like a collaboration or a partnership. I mean, in my mind, if they really wanted to partner with us and collaborate. They, um, they would have asked for a follow up meeting where we could have really discussed what we heard from Laughco. They could have got, taken the pulse of the fire board and asked if this is something. That the fire board members were really interested in moving forward with. This is the first, this right now, and even though it wasn't planned, this is the first. Real discussion that this board as a governing body has even had about the concept of consolidation. And what, again, what problem would it conceivably solve? What are the downsides? What, what does the bigger issue look like?
I don't know, do you want me to talk about that?
I don't know that, that's just my opinion is that it does not feel collaborative to me. And this is all supposed to be about equal partners, collaboration. And I don't get any sense that that is the direction it's moving.
I, I guess the impression I got from them is they didn't want to. I guess be a burden on this district that they were interested in finding out. You know, the directors after the joint meeting. Luanne said, the next thing to do is do a financial analysis. And they said, oh, well, we're very interested in seeing those numbers. And they didn't want to drag something as banal as like, can we get the fire district to pay for half of it? It's rather than come to us hat in hand, asking us for money. I think they wanted to proceed without having to do that and without having to, to appear to be. Begging this district to participate financially. And I think that's part of why they made the, they stressed the point to me that they're not asking for us to do this. They want our participation, uh, even without, uh, skin in the game, if you will.
I guess you're, you've been privy to conversations that were not in the public record. Cause that's not how I heard their board meeting, public discussion.
Yeah, that, that is true that I, I have heard things that are, were not discussed at public meetings.
Like, I guess, Candace, were you planning to read the public, the letter that came in over, would you be able to read it? Or do you have it handy? Oh, sorry Jim. I should sit at the end and I can see everybody, sorry.
Yeah, I, I do have some problems with the use of this word partnership. But I also have a problem with the financial analysis. What is this financial analysis? All that we have heard from the GM of the KPP CSD board. Is that he got some preliminary estimates of fifteen to fifty thousand dollars to complete one of these studies. What does this study actually involve? If, if it's going to, if it's going to have any benefit. In my opinion, it has to be a real thorough analysis. Of the finance benefits of consolidation. But also the costs of the two districts. And how a, a consolidation would potentially affect. The, particularly the more wealthy of the two districts, which is the fire board going forward. So just, just to say that it's going to be fifteen to fifty thousand dollars doesn't tell me much. I'd like to know a lot more about what.
I could read, for example, if you would like. David Aranda did email me one of the very detailed quotes that he got from, well, maybe I won't do that because we're running out of time. But I have seen and I can send to you if you would like, a sort of a very detailed breakdown of what, what they do in one of these analyses. So basically they do a five year forecast of the KPP CSD. Including all of their necessaries, a five year forecast of the KFPD, including all of our necessaries. And a hypothetical five year forecast of consolidated district. And then they will do the analysis of, you know, they will say, well, what if we substitute a full time position into. The GM role instead of two part time positions and things of that sort and forecast out. In a couple of different scenarios, what the five year forecast looks for the districts separately and the districts together. And that's, and then it's back, then it's a values judgment, right? These are numbers, we'll have the numbers and then these, this board and that board will look at those numbers and decide whether or not the. Costs or savings are sufficient to justify doing things. And there's many other things that go into that as well, um, as, as Larry mentioned. So, but yeah, I can send you the sort of detail breakdown of what it is. But it, in basically, it's a five year forecast of what if the districts are separate from now going forward? And what if the districts were together from now going forward?
By the way, we, we need to extend our meeting.
I, I'll make one more comment about that and then let's look, talk about that. This is also troubling me, just the way this is being communicated to Jim. There's so much that's taking place outside the public eye. So and so talked to so and so, so and so appointed so and so and replaced so and so. And Luanne sent me this, but she didn't send everybody this and David sent me this, I can send it to you. I mean, this needs to be a public process. This is a very, very important process.
I thought it exceeded my, my charge that we'll get to later to start talking all about it.
No, but I mean, one of the justifiable complaints and Jim and I complained about it too, was that that committee that looked at joint occupancy. You know, didn't have its meetings in public and we wanted to. And so a lot took place behind the scenes and all of a sudden conclusions were made. Not by us, but by two members of that board. Based on supposed data that nobody on their board and nobody on our board has even seen. So I, I think we need to.
But.
Well, there's nothing here now. And it sounds like you have background information that would have helped us understand this better. And it, it didn't go into the packet.
Some wealth, yeah, not all of it, no.
But we should stop folks, there's, there's a lot ahead of us and we should probably decide. Should we just save the rest of what's ahead of us for our next meeting? It, it's, is it all?
Oh, we do have to vote on the special district person. Cause that's required by July tenth and we won't meet again in time.
And I think the rest, Mary, do you need any decisions from us tonight? For the rest of the meeting? I don't think there are any other decisions to be made besides the Laughco thing.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
So, does somebody want to make a proposal for, so we should, we should vote on the Laughco thing? I mean, this is my opinion, try to vote on the Laughco thing, finish this agenda item. But maybe we can just defer the rest of this. Option one, extend the meeting till we get through it all. Option two. Adjourn this meeting to another meeting or option three, just put the rest of it on the July agenda. Any comments on that from anybody else?
Uh, it's nine fifty three.
I'll make the motion that we extend the meeting by fifteen minutes so that we can decide what to do.
All right.
Okay.
All right, ten fifteen then. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and Don's absent. Okay. All right, should we move to public comment? And anybody, we can always come back to the board. I know there's a public comment to be read and we have one from the. So are you, do you have the letter? Do you mind reading it? Thank you, okay, great.
Testing. The KPOA requests that the Kensington Fire Board recognize the importance of consolidation slash reorganization. As a relevant good governance issue. Most knowledge of how the process works is known and has been shared publicly. Laughco and the Kensington Ad Hoc Committee had made positive recommendations. The next immediate step in assessment is to fund the financial analysis of unification as required by Laughco. As you know, approval of analysis is not a decision to implement unification. Regardless of individual directors' current opinions about unification of the boards. It is the duty of both boards to collaborate with each other on assessment of its wisdom and with open minds. You can demonstrate sincere collaboration by splitting the costs of the financial analysis with the Kensington Police and Services Board. Rob, signed Rob Furman, KPOA President with approval of the KPOA Board of Directors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comment in the, there's one person on the call and one person in the room. You have a public comment?
I'm mute.
Excuse me. As a board member of the, of the police district with regard to Jim's question about. There's no detail and that's true. And the reason being is we were intending to draft a request for a proposal. That would delineate what was expected by the, a contractor. With regard to a fiscal analysis of both the two districts separately and the combined district. And we would seek your review and comment on that proposal. To see it was, if it were consistent with your thoughts on this issue. And so, and my general manager has communicated with Mary. That we are drafting an RFP. And we were very much interested in getting feedback from either. Your general manager and the board or the board separately. So that from my perspective is part of what that partnership means. So we're not trying to do this unilaterally by any means and would seek your review. And concurrence, at least certainly on the RFP. And as Daniel has pointed out, we have a fifty thousand dollar line item in our budget. To pay for what we think would be the cost of the financial analysis based on. An estimate that was provided by a contract who does work for, for Laughco. Or the, or Laughco's, not just Contra Costa Laughco. So, and I'll leave it at that and not comment any further. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess my personal preference would be, this is me just speaking for myself, to take no action on this resolution. But others should speak up about what they'd like to see happen tonight.
Can I ask a question? Would you be amenable to tabling this to our July meeting? At which point I can come back in the packet with as much supporting documentation as I have seen and I can get. Maybe I can see what, you know, if the KPP CSD has a draft of their RFP that they have in mind already. You know, I can bring, if they have that, I don't know if they have that. But if they have that, I, I could bring that back to the board for consideration in July. Along with, like I said, the email that I got from Luanne and the email that I got from David Aranda, this forward from the person that he spoke to. Would that be? Would that be a waste of time or would that be something you would be interested?
Well, as a board member, you can put whatever you, you know, within reason, try to put whatever you want on the agenda. I haven't turned down any agenda items except those that are. Uh, legal counsel recommended against putting on the agenda. I think. My thought of taking no action on this resolution is actually a more flexible. Outcome than your proposal to carry this item into the next board meeting. Uh, because that sort of limits it to bringing the same item back. Whereas you sound like you're trying to recraft it altogether.
I guess I'm just trying to get a sense from from the other directors, but I guess for what would be most appealing to you all.
Well, I I would, in particular, I would like uh. I I I would encourage further, like to hear about further discussion. With with the uh with the other board as to the questions that have been raised here. What what are we, what will be in this financial analysis? What are we trying to do? What problem are we trying to solve? Uh, I mean, that's probably the first thing we should do. I I think Kensington works very good, very well right now. Uh, maybe it can be improved, uh, but what is the problem? The uh, the fires get put out, the police is responding to. I I don't understand I uh th- those basic issues. So, I don't think, I don't think what we need now is more numbers. I think what we need now is. Some agreement from the other board as to what it is we're trying to accomplish. And 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 what this partnership would be because it's a very strange partnership for me.
I guess to clarify, in what form would you, in your mind, in what form would that take?
Well, I I I know how much everybody likes meetings. But uh, I would think a joint, another joint meeting with uh with the police district where this is all we discuss. How are, are, how are, how are we going to move forward on this issue of uh? Reorganization or uh, whatever you.
Consolidation.
It's not consolidation, it's it's reorganization.
But we haven't decided which.
I mean, you're, no, you're eliminating one of the districts and you're. Having the other one take over the work of it, so that that's that's reorganization.
Well, consolidation is a term of art, but.
In any event, we don't even know what to call it. And I I think until we have, obviously, so we 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 need to. Get some common ground here and 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 if we're gonna move forward in a partnership. It's not a partnership where, well, I write the RFP and I paid for it and you can, you can look at it if you want to. That's, to me, that's not a partnership. I don't know what they want from a rubber stamp, uh, maybe, I don't know. But it it's. What problem are we trying to solve? I think that's the first nail to 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 drive into the.
I agree. I've, I mean, there's textbooks full of solutions. To, but you need to know your problem before you know what solutions you're gonna throw at it. And there may be three different, three or four different alternatives. If it's just about. Administrative efficiency, some very, very knowledgeable people in Kensington have brought up the idea of a joint powers agreement. Between the two districts where we have two separate general managers, but then common non-political. Administrative services can be shared. I mean, if that's all it's about, I've never seen anyone dissolve a fire district. Just to improve accounting.
Well, I, as I said, I've delineated the problem as I see it. Uh, I think fairly clearly and. I understand that you may. Disagree that the problems uh in terms of improving service or lowering costs are important. Or or worth paying. Attention to trying to find the solutions to that. Um, but if you would like, I could propose uh for uh a gentleman or next meeting that we could propose. A joint special meeting if you would like to talk directly um with the KPP CSD. Would that be something that the board would be interested in?
Well, now, assuming, Larry, we haven't scared you away from being on the consolidation committee. And and again, the charge I wrote was just a draft. Those were the questions that were coming to my mind, but. You know, I feel that it's now it's not I, you, a party of one, Daniel anymore. It's you and Larry figuring out as a committee of two, because Larry did agree to serve on that committee and. I personally think it's very important to have a balanced perspective on that committee and Larry's been on the fire board for a very long time. He also is extremely knowledgeable about fire services and special districts. All around the the county and even in the state. So I think that Larry really provides the strength. That gives a balanced perspective coming from this district.
I look forward to working with Larry. At later item, we will become a consolidation committee of two. I really do look forward to that. Um, I think that that's, that's great. We should do the last.
Two, 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 two and two uh meeting would uh. Would would we get enough clarity to this to to move forward with the resolution? I don't know. I I think. I think before we do too much movement. Everybody, everybody has to to buy into it, so. The two-by-two is nice to come up with some preliminary agreement and then put it before the board. But uh, it's not, it's, we can't just make the decision with a two-by-two committee.
So should we skip to a joint meeting or do you want to have two-by-two meetings first?
Well, perhaps the first thing to do would be to have a two-by-two meeting to.
I, well, they don't have a second one, but yes, it's just Dave.
We've got David with.
Okay, uh, so it sounds like if I. Can summarize, just because I'm trying to wrap my head around it, we're not going to. There's a general not disinterest in acting on this resolution tonight. Is that, Jim, I do haven't expressed. Okay, um, but then Larry and I, as a newly expanded consolidation committee. We'll go talk with Dave. And uh, and go from there. And it sounds like once we sort of clarify some of those issues, we'll come back to the board uh for the scheduling of a joint meeting between the two boards. To happen uh sometime in the near future, I guess, to clarify uh what. Precisely the problem, all of the boards can come together and agree need to be addressed.
Exactly. I I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
The Laughco.
Next item.
Yeah, and um. So that, so basically there was a tie in in the Laughco representative and Mary, I'm sorry, could you? What did you put in the packet? I started looking through this. Here's the information that there's a runoff and.
Yeah, so there's two candidates and they neither of them were ones that we had discussed at the last meeting. Michelle Lee uh with San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District and. Scott Pastor, uh, what's his agency?
Diablo Water.
Thank you, Diablo Water District. Uh, and they had a candidate statement for Michelle Lee that's on page one sixty-seven of the packet and his is one sixty-eight.
Larry, are you familiar with either uh of these two?
I am not. I feel like I've heard Scott Pastor's name, but I don't know where.
I mean, I had, I had an inclination to go with the the fire district person just because we're a fire district, but that is a. You know, it's just a, I don't have anything else to go on.
Think that candidate statement was just a little more descriptive of what, what her passion.
Yeah, I I agree. And and she she wrote to us, yeah.
And I love a person who's interested in well-organized boundaries.
Let's see, we've. Minutes.
Oh, seven minutes.
Well, seven, oh, ten, ten is, yeah, got it, seven, alright.
My, my, my inclination would be to uh. My inclination would be to go with uh Michelle Lee, just because uh she is in a fire district and I think. She would better represent the needs of fire districts in the county. But I, you know, I really don't. Know either of these two. I have met Michelle Lee once at a uh CCSDA meeting. But. I don't, I don't have a recommendation.
Any thoughts from you, Jim, between the two? I don't know. Someone like to make a motion and we'll just see how. Would you, would you be interested in making a motion for one of the two candidates?
Sure, sure. I I make a motion that we cast one ballot for Michelle Lee. For uh Laughco. A representative for the Special District SDA.
Do I have a second? I'll I'll second that, Larry. Okay, public comment. Nobody on the line, so, alright, all in favor? I, no one here to oppose Don's.
Not anywhere near as controversial.
You have five minutes just to regroup since we haven't finished our agenda. We have the choice to pick this up on another night that we specify. Or just to adjourn to the July meeting. At at which point, you know, I don't even know if any of this has to come back because these are just reports that we can read. So. My inclination would be to just adjourn to the July regular meeting, but I'm.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
I I move we adjourn the meeting uh with all unfinished business moved to the July regu- the regular July meeting. Of the KFBD.
Second.
Second, okay. Public comment. Okay. I'm all in favor. I, hey, um, okay, thank you, everyone. Four minutes early.